Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for today, Tuesday, November 28th at 6:30 PM. Please stand for our invocation and a moment of silence.
Let's pray. Oh, God, our Father, we come in a season of gratitude, Father, where Thanksgiving is given unto you for your goodness and your grace and your mercy. We thank you, Father, for your protection over this community, for the guidance you continue to give, for the doors that you open to better the families of this community. Father, that's our prayer again tonight, that the men and women in this room would make those decisions to guide this future, to guide the future of this community, bringing joy to all. Again, we thank you, Lord, for your protection, and pray for more of your protection, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Do we have any veterans in the audience tonight? No? Mrs. Yuzlak, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk Treasurer, could you call the role of the council, please?
Yes. Councilwoman Neal?
Here.
Councilman Minchuck. Councilwoman Yuzlak?
Here.
Councilman Pettit?
Here.
Councilman White?
Here.
President Bella?
Here.
Six presents.
Thank you. And also thank you to you, Ms. Lewis, for filling in for Kelly tonight.
You are welcome.
Moving on to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Did we have anything tonight, Michael?
Nothing was presented to our office to my knowledge, Mr. President.
Thank you. Then moving on to the...
I'm sorry, I should have stood.
Thank you. The consent agenda, we have the accounts payable voucher approval for November 28th, the approval of the town council meeting minutes of November 14th, and the approval of the town council work-study minutes from November 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval of the consent agenda. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the additional appropriations. This is somewhat different from our normal format, so I'm going to ask Mr. Griffin to help us through this process.
Mr. President, members of the council, Madam Clerk Treasurer Pro Tem, it is my privilege to help the council always, and in particular, this particular matter. We have two additional appropriation hearings that have to be conducted this evening. The first is a proposed additional appropriation to be considered for the municipal Cume Capital Development Fund, as will the other one as well. This is proposed to be in the amount of $43,590, Mr. President, members of the council, Madam Clerk Treasurer Pro Tem. It would be in order at this time to have verification that a proof of publication is in receipt and that its contents meet the requirements of the law. And once the town attorney has recited that to you, it would be in order to call a public hearing with regard to this proposed additional appropriation, the purpose of which is to get additional equipment. Some of it is going to go towards the purchase of our decorations, which you see already out there.
Mm-hmm.
That's its purpose. This is coming from unappropriated, undesignated fund. It's not reserve, it's undesignated fund balance, so it's not committed to any other purpose, and it will not interfere with the ordinary course of the budgetary requirements of this fund. That is also true for the next hearing that you'll have. If there's nothing further, I'll be seated.
Thank you, Michael.
Mr. President, I've been able to review the proof of publication. Everything looks in order and is legal under Indiana code.
We'll open it now for public comment. Is there any public comment on this additional appropriation, the amount of $43,590? Is there any public comment? Saying done. We'll move on, Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, members of the council, Madam Clerk Treasurer Pro Tempore, the mixed matter will be subject to your ordinary rules. It is true that you generally will introduce an ordinance, and then if it passes first reading, you don't take it up again until a subsequent meeting. Owing to the fact of what the purpose of this particular ordinance is, hopeful to adopt and support, which is the purchase of some of those decorations. And we don't want to make the vendor wait too long to be paid. We'd like our signature to be good within 30 or 45 days. I'm asking if the council will, if there is no objection by the council with regard to the purposes of the ordinance, that they would consider this under your suspension of rules, which is both in state law and in your code, and consider passage and adoption at the same evening of its introduction.
Very good. Thank you, Michael. Any questions or comments from the council? We'll take this up later on the agenda. Is that right, Mr. Griffin?
Yes, it is, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to standing and special committee reports, budget and finance. Is there something from budget and finance?
Mr. President, I beg the council's pardon. Please forgive me. You do need to also conduct a hearing on an additional appropriation, also in the CCD fund, but for $40,000.
Oh, yes.
This is actually, so I beg the council's pardon, but we just have to have the formal hearing.
We will open it up now for public hearing on the $40,000 CCD fund.
Mr. President, just to let everybody know, I have reviewed this proof of publication as well. Everything is in order and necessary under Indiana code.
Thank you. Was there any public comment? The record show there's no public comment. Moving on to standing committees. Was there anything from budget and finance? Mr. Griffin?
Mr. President, we have nothing to present at this time. Thank you.
Council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Street department, Mr. Minchuck.
No report at this time.
Elections, public relations, and town beautification, Mrs. Neal?
Just an update on our holiday tree lighting, which is going to take place this Friday, 5:30 to 7:30, at the Dean and Barber Community Center. I guess you guys should have by now seen all of the information out, because we've had it posted in several different places. So we're just looking forward to seeing the community participate in our, which is going to be our annual tree lighting.
Nice. Thank you. Environmental affairs, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, being sick myself, I didn't get a chance to look too much at the COVID situation, which we normally talk about at each council meeting. However, I've been monitoring just the news, and it says something's new out there, and they can't really identify it, but they know it's happening. So maybe I had it first, because I've been at you and sneezing for two weeks, so. So I would think that would be the end of my report, and I guess...
Mr. Pettit, would you like to be relocated on the dials?
It's too late now.
You could use Mr. Hardaway's chair.
It's too late now. But that's it on our environmental affairs, Mr. Chairman. Unless you have something you wanted to add, Mrs. Yuzlak?
Just that the flu is out there. It's quite prevalent, and they are giving shots at all pharmacies, Walgreens, CVS, and your local doctor, too. So if the public can, please get out and get a flu shot. You still have time.
Absolutely. Especially seniors like myself. We need to get that done, because we're more vulnerable as you get older. I think, you don't know nothing about that, Rick. But as we get older, we're more vulnerable. So I'll follow up in...
Okay.
Amen her. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to personnel policy, employee benefits. I would like to call to the podium, Mr. Galeros. Matt, would you come forward, please? I know he has a report for us for our considerations for the town insurance program. Please use the podium, if you don't mind, with the microphone as we are taping the meeting.
Thank you very much. So we'd had the chance to meet with the Personnel Committee last week and review a few options regarding the upcoming renewal of the health insurance program for the town of Maryville. And after meeting with employees and getting their feedback, as well as the Personnel Committee, we have a few recommendations for approval for the council for the 2024 plan year for their medical, dental, vision, and financial protection products. The first would be that we move the dental and vision away from Guardian Insurance Company and move it to United Healthcare. This is able to provide the town savings on their medical insurance premium after negotiations of approximately negative 1% off of what they were currently paying. As well as, if we were to do that, we would recommend that the town decide to offer a fourth option for the employees to choose. There's no additional cost to the town, however, it is an additional option to the employees. If they do decide to purchase the plan that they had had previously in the 2022 plan year, they would have the opportunity to do so, however, it would be at their own additional expense on top of what the town currently is providing them coverage for. And then the, probably the most important aspect would be, we're looking for approval to increase the employees' HSA contribution from $500 for a single up to $1,000, as well as from a family, going from $1,000 to $1,500. And this adjustment, after analysis and what we'll refer to as stress testing, the financial aspect of it, we predict that even if 20% of the employees migrate from the current plan they're in into the HSA and get that additional deposit, it's only a 3% increase to the budget off of what was previously spent in 2023. And after reviewing it with the Personnel Committee, we were all comfortable with the, with that recommendation, as well as we're asking for approval to continue the education program that the town has been doing with the employees for the last year, as well as the incentive program that goes along with that. So, and then the last piece is just continued education for your employees to make sure they understand the benefits that the town provides and the strong benefits that are available to them, so.
And Matt, how soon do we need to make action on picking the insurance company?
Yeah, we're looking, so the intention is not to change insurance companies, as stated with United, and just make the adjustments that are recommended. We're looking for approval tonight, if possible.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve Matt's presentation. As a member of the Personnel Committee, we sat in on those meetings. I do have a couple of questions for him, if...
Let's have a second first, Mr. Pettit, please.
Second.
Is there a second? Mr. Minchuck? Go ahead, Sean.
Matt, you mentioned in bullet point number four, the town is increasing the contribution to the HSA, correct? Not the employee?
Correct.
We're gonna, the town's gonna pay that, 500 to 1,000, and 1,000 to 1,500. Now, that's for single and employee plus one. I don't remember. Did we do anything? Are those our two tiers, or do we have a third tier?
Yeah, so, good question, and for a point of clarification, you have employee only when it comes to health savings account options, and that would be just your rank-and-file employee that doesn't carry dependents. Anyone carrying dependents would be moving from 1,000 to 1,500. So it doesn't matter if they have one or if they have four dependents for that, or more.
All right.
Any other questions on the recommendations?
Mr. President.
Mr. White?
I just wanted to know, this is for Mr. Galeros, is AFLAC part of this, as well as it's just something for United Healthcare?
Supplemental.
AFLAC supplemental, correct.
So that wouldn't be part of...
Not part of this approval process.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, again, I want to thank Matt Myers-Galeros. They are a local business, which we have selected as our third-party administrator for how many years, Matt?
Seven.
Seven years now. Appreciate your work and everything you do for the town.
Happy to be here.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions or comments on the motion to approve the recommendations as presented by Matt? Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Neal?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzlak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Six yeses, and motion carries. Thank you. Anything else to report under personnel, Mr. Griffin?
Mr. President, members of the council, Madam Clerk Treasurer Pro Tempore, we have nothing further to report at this time. And I do thank the council for its favorable action on the recommendation. It wasn't quite a recommendation. We didn't feel we had enough at the committee, but we, the people that were present were impressed with the presentation. And I just want to echo what Councilman Pettit said about the quality of the work that Mr. Myers did for us, Mr. Galeros did for us, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks. Public safety, Mr. Minchuck?
No report.
Economic development, Mr. Pettit?
No report.
Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Yuzlak?
Everything is in order with the parks and the bike trail, Mr. President.
Okay.
And I don't know if they're going to come out one more time. Torrance, can you verify that for me?
Good evening. As long as the weather shows that it's going to be nice, it's going to go back up, and we got some rain, we'll continue to cut and maintain.
Good, thank you. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Do we have any report for abandoned lighted properties, Mr. Griffin?
Mr. President, I'm not aware of any further report at this time.
Thank you. Dean and Barber White Community Center, Mr. Pettit?
Mr. President, I shared with everyone via email, and I apologize, Michael, I sent it to you, but I did not ask for it to be put on the agenda. But I'm going to go ahead and address it tonight anyways. I had an email request from Jacob Knazier from Andrain High School. They have recently been using the Mike Anderson Event Center for their annual alumni dinner. And they had asked, Mr. Knazier had asked if the council would consider waiving the rental fee. We waived it last year and the year before that. This is partnering with Andrain and what their future in the town of Maryville will be. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to waive that fee, Torrance, on the Mike Anderson Event Center. I think it's in February, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Yuzlak, to waive the event fee for Andrain High School for their alumni dinner. Questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Do we know the cost of that waiver?
Do we, what's the rental fee, Torrance?
$400. $400? Thank you. That's it, Mr. President.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have, unless Torrance has anything. I know we're still working on the checklist that we developed with Core on door handles and those type of items. Torrance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And we still need to finish the utility assessment, circle R, coming out on the roof and looking at different things. So when we get an update, let me know, and Jeff and I and Leonard can call a meeting if we need one before the end of the year.
Sounds good.
Moving on to special projects. Is there a minority report from either Mr. Pettit or Mr. Minchuck?
No.
Thank you. Moving on to department and commission reports. Lake County Solid Waste and Management District, Mr. White?
Yes, Mr. President. The actual meeting for Lake County Solid Waste will be on November 30th, so I don't have a current report for...
Okay.
Yep.
That kind of was a report, just... Moving on to stormwater management resources, Mr. Lake?
Yeah, really quick. The Kaiserditch Stormwater Lateral Project is virtually complete. Paving is done. We got a final walkthrough later this week with DLZ, and then we'll get our final pay request from Goff Construction, and that project will be completely wrapped up. Later on the agenda, we have the second reading of the updated stormwater ordinance. I've also been updating the GIS shape files, working closely with Lake County GIS Coordinator Matt Cashin, giving him updates, and working with Steve on any changes to the roadway layer. And we ended up submitting to him a few revisions that he updated the master shape file for the county. That's important, because everybody takes information from the county to make their own files, their own maps and things like that for cities and towns. So I updated ours accordingly. So those are essentially done. Met with Chaz Riley with regards to the website, getting updates there. So he has, I only have maybe two maps left to update, and then everything is updated, and then we'll do some hard copy printouts and go from there. So we'll be in pretty good shape with regards to that. Risk tree removal, Homer Tree Services is working in Turkey Creek. They've been issued a notice to proceed. They said they could do it all within a week. That's over 202 trees. I'm anxious to watch that one work, so we'll see how it goes. Our project at 69th and Connecticut Street, VS Engineering, is looking at the lowest mustard bidder, which was Grimmer Construction, at $479,493 and zero cents. I assume everything will be in order, and then we'll issue a notice to proceed to them. Had a webinar meeting this morning with IDM Commissioners presented on the Indiana Clean Communities Program. We were awarded Bronze Level Status. There's only six communities in the state that are part of this program. Been working with them closely for the last couple of years on revamping the entire way they do this program, and they're going to be, they officially unleash it and unveil it for the rest of the state, so other communities can participate. And so I want to thank IDM for, you know, working with them and all the things that we've done to drive this whole thing forward. There was a lot of work. And the communities were Beech Grove, Brown County, Fishers, Richmond, Zionsville, and us.
Great.
That's all I have.
So we're the only municipality in northern Indiana that were selected for the program, huh?
That's correct.
That's great. And I can't stress enough how important it is to have the name Maryville spoken downstate. You know, that's kind of an important thing for us to get on the map. I know that past Senator Griffin can attest to how important it is when you try to get something passed downstate, that they even recognize the name of your town and know where it is and what you're all about. We've had the governor up here many times for ribbon cuttings, and it's important. And I think that Maryville is back on the map. It's kind of nice to see that. So, thank you, Matt. Thanks. Moving on to the fire territory board. Mr. Minchuck and Mrs. Neal?
They currently don't have any meetings scheduled. I did report back to their board, as well as their department heads, in reference to the motion we made at the last meeting. They were very grateful for that amount of money from ARP for the radios. I also learned at that time, and I don't think it was confirmed, maybe the chief confirmed it, they were looking into, or I'm sorry, they received word from the company that if the purchase was made earlier, there may be a substantial amount of savings to the total package. Of course, we don't have an answer yet, but he looks forward to working with Sean and possibly future for the remaining balance.
So Ed, would you mind coming to the podium, because I believe Mr. Minchuck was probably on the plane.
It's very possible.
When you actually did hear...
I got like a week, I'm a week behind.
We just got an email, Jeff.
I don't know why I have Jay Minchuck instead of Jeff Minchuck. I didn't, I tried to correct it several times. So I kept forwarding the emails to you. I don't know if you got them or not.
I sent them to him.
Right. Yeah, so if we could, if we could secure the purchase before January 1 of '24, the total price of the radios goes from 511,000 down to, I believe it was 386, it was $125,000 savings. So that's the only time crunch with this, would be to get it. They only require a purchase order prior to the first of the year, and these radios probably won't begin due to supply-demand, all that good stuff, probably till March, April, May, when the payment will be due. So we do have some time. It's just that when you get locked in before January 1st, that's all.
What was the difference that we need between what we already allocated?
I think it's like 100 and, oh, boy, I can look on my phone.
I think, yeah, I think it was 136.
I wasn't prepared for this, but I think it was 136,000?
Okay.
Sounds right.
There you go.
So we already did the... Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
So we already did the 250K from...
ARP.
ARP fund, right?
Correct.
So, Mr. Pettit, would you mind broaching this subject with your redevelopment commission to see if we can tap into...
Redevelopment Commission members, you want to approach this subject, or do we need to turn to, I guess the first question, Mr. President, is, and I thought of the same thing, and this is where I kind of probably differ from state statute, Michael and Joe. You know, our TIF districts, these gentlemen, along with Chief Nusis's gentlemen, serve all of the TIF districts. And why we can't do things outside of, or do things, you know, like this is beyond me. You know, there's questions about it, but you guys go out and fight fires in the Mississippi Street TIF district. You go out and fight fires in the Maryville Road TIF district. So Joe and Michael and Trista, is this an eligible expense to be split between the three TIF districts, or four?
I believe it could be, yes.
I think so, Sean.
It is?
There was recent legislation that expressly empowered operating, and I beg the council's pardon, I'm just amplifying what Ms. Hudson is sharing with you. There was recent legislation that was adopted in this recent session, retroactive to January 1st, incidentally, that authorizes the use of tax increment from any allocation fund for public safety purposes, which includes capital as well as operational. So we're very confident that this would be the kind of expense that would be legitimate. It's just a policy question for the governing board about whether you want to go further than we did in our budget.
All right, Lynn, let's do this, Michael. Second meeting, or the first meeting in December, which I believe is December 12th, I'm going to call a special redevelopment commission meeting to have this item on the agenda. You and Ms. Chilcot and Trista put this together, and Ed will get this, will get this approved December 12th. All right?
Thank you.
I don't know if Jeff or Margie or Leonard have any other comments or concerns about this. You guys okay with it?
Yes, sounds good.
All right. We'll just take the formal action, right, Joe?
Yeah.
We would need to approve this in an RDC meeting?
Right, you're gonna have to take formal...
All right, let's do that. 6:15, Michael on the 12th.
Got it.
All right.
Thank you. Do we have a planned commission that did?
No.
We have a planned commission the week before.
Anything else, Mr. Minchuck?
No, sorry, I was, my delayed dollar short comment.
Department reports. Parks and Recreation, Torrance Price?
Just one note on top of the tree lighting that we have this coming Friday. Next week is the Boys and Girls Club Annual Christmas Party on December 7th. We also have two, not two giveaways, but two coat and toy events that's going on. One sponsored by 219, Riden Wranglers, on the 17th of December. The other one is the Angel Tree Distribution through the Salvation Army, which is December the 18th and the 19th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. When you walk in the community center, there's a tree there, and there's angels on the tree. So you can take an angel off, and you can sponsor a kid that way, if you want to get involved in that. So if you have any other questions, we can get you the contact for the person who's doing it. Lieutenant Katrina Andrews is our contact person. And so three awesome events that's coming up.
Nice.
Torrance, what time is the Boys and Girls Club Christmas party?
Well, that starts at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
Police Department Chief Nusis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to announce that the LPR system is back up and running on Broadway, so that's going to be very beneficial to our town in helping us catch a lot of these stolen cars and people that are wanted. This past two weeks have been extremely busy for patrol. You have all the shopping, you have this influx of people that are coming in from everywhere, and it's been extremely busy. So I wanted to give a thank you to all the surrounding agencies. I don't want to name them by name because I don't want to forget anybody, but all of our neighbors have been helping us pick up calls, and it's been, it's been really appreciated. Our officers are doing extremely great job, considering how busy they have been. So ultimately, it's been a very good success rate, because we've been catching all the bad guys and gals. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Chief. Planning and building, Ms. Schein?
I just have one thing to report. We have been working in the planning and building department to get our building permit application up online, Matt. Woo-hoo. So Cory from Permit Tracks is ready to go with that. It will decrease the amount of paper and ink that we use to get our building permits, and it'll also probably decrease the amount of traffic that we have in the building department, because people will be able to pull their permits right down out of the Permit website, and then, of course, we'll work to get it onto the Maryville website.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Street Department, Mr. King?
So we've been extremely busy. So we are putting up Christmas decorations along Broadway. We had several of them that have not worked, so we're rewiring poles. I think we're down to a few up on the north end. We're also replacing streetlight bulbs all over town that have gone out. We've been working on that. Leaf pickup, lots of leaves. We've had all our crews out. We finished up in the town today, and I noticed up north that people are bringing more leaves out. So we will, we'll have one crew available as needed to go pick up leaves, as long as the weather permits. We have, we've got it changing over to the winter operations. We've just sent seven of our drivers to snowplow training, so they're going to be out on the road here in the next few days, learning their routes, learning how to drive an actual truck with the plow on it. But the training has tremendously helped them. But we'll just, we'll just keep plugging along and making it happen.
Great. Mr. White?
Yes, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. President. Actually, I want to tell Mr. King thanks a whole lot for the streets.
Oh, that taking care of that street? You're welcome.
People had said it hadn't been paved in 50 years.
That thing was...
It's only 51 years.
Horrible.
So that means it's never been paved before, but people are extremely happy. I want to let you know personally that I appreciate everything you've done over there because it's been a lot.
Oh, thank you.
Even with the speed signs.
Speed humps.
Speed humps. Those are good things, and people will really appreciate it. I got some calls, I'm sure you got some calls as well. But I say big thanks to you. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you.
And thanks for the new streets over there. That's it.
Mr. Griffin, Town Manager's Report.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Madam Clerk Treasure, pro tempore, I laid at your place, as well as emailed you copies of the monthly report. As you know, the second report I present to you each month is a compilation that I asked department heads to give me essentially bullet points, so that they can be reported to you in satisfaction of Section 2-39.1 of the municipal code here for monthly reports. So you have it, and the only two things I want to comment about it are, first, the industry of our department heads. I would have said this if you weren't here, by the way. The department heads have been so industrious. In my brief time of being exposed to their work ethic, it's been incredibly impressive. I was impressed when I arrived, but I continue to be impressed. I just... I'm sure you all noticed that, Members of the Council, but I want to commend them to you. Good job selecting them and good job in retaining them, so know that. This actually is for Trista and Madam Clerk Treasure, who's absent, and myself. The one thing I wanted to call your attention to is one of our objectives is to try to get investment policy ordinance to your desk in time to at least be considered by year end. I don't think we'll make it in time for it to be adopted unless you suspend the rules. It's actually a project that Ms. Hudson and I separately believed we wanted to get done by year end, and then we talked about it and found out that we shared that. We're not talking about deviating from state law, which we could not. We're basically going to embrace state law, but there's a best practice that includes us having a policy like that, that would give us one advantage, which is the ability to have maturities of longer than two years, but not greater than five years. Right now, the ordinary investment policy without one adopted locally means we can only do two years. That wasn't a big deal before, but it is kind of a big deal now in this current market, although it's changing. So having something longer term, if we can find the liquidity for that, would just give us some advantages. It's considered a best practice. It also defines the public treasury in a really cool way, I think. That's a term of art, by the way. In any event, I just want to commend your attention to that and the work product of our department heads, and unless there's a question by any Members of the Council with regard to the report I've submitted, I'll be happy to be seated. I thank the Council.
Mr. President, thank you.
And I have to thank you too, Michael. You're so diligent with everything.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to general orders, we have first reading ordinance 23-28, an enactment appropriating additional monies in excess of the annual budget for the CCD fund.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Usalak for approval of ordinance 23-28 on first reading. Questions or comments? This is the ordinance that we had a hearing on earlier this evening, and the amount's $43,590. Hearing, no questions. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Neal?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Six-zero, motion carries.
Mr. President, I believe Mr. Griffin mentioned to suspend the rules, I'd like to make a motion to do so.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mr. Minchuck, to suspend the rules to read ordinance 23-28 on second and final reading. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Neal?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Six yeses, it's unanimous. Motion carries, we'll read it on second reading, ordinance 23-28.
Motion for final approval on said ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Minchuck, with a second by Mr. Pettit, for approval on second reading, ordinance 23-28. Counselor, we already had the public hearing on this particular ordinance, so we can move forward, right?
Correct.
Any questions or comments from the Council on second reading? Hearing none, Madam Clerk Treasure.
Councilwoman Neal?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Six yeses, the motion carries.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, I thank you.
Moving on tonight to ordinance 23-29, it's ordinance of the town of Maryville, providing that ordinance number 21-24 of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by adding a section regarding completion date for a project. Mr. Svetnov, do you want to brief us on this one?
Yes, we've been contacted by the developer at a project located at 93rd and Broadway, better known as the Weiss Development Group, regarding this condo project that they're planning right now. What they're doing, in essence, with this amended ordinance, is extending the project date to November 15th of 2028. With that, it's just giving them a little bit more cushion, which to get the project completed, because it's a massive undertaking, and it's helping with their financing as well. So at this time, I've approved it, I've worked with Mr. Anderson on this, so at this time, I suggest the Council go ahead and approve this ordinance.
And the way I understand it, he has filed for some Indiana tax credits and some other financing, and it's caused a delay in the construction project start, right?
Yes.
Why don't you come up, Mr. Anderson, and use the microphone? So this would kind of like restart the clock, is that right, Joe, for them?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Good evening, Richard Anderson, 9211 Broadway, Maryville, Indiana. Basically, our time clock started to run on 9:28 of 21, so because of bidding and shortages, et cetera, now we only have a year left in order to comply with the PUD ordinance, which says we have to be done in three years. So we're not going to make the one year, so what we did is we added time to it, so that if the project, depending on how the bidding comes in next year, I mean, it's still going to be done, but it might be in phases, and then these tax credits you're talking about, they are also entering into the picture.
Great, okay.
Projects going forward, it's just a little slower than what we thought.
Sure.
Mr. President, a couple of questions for Richard and Joe. With this being a PUD, Richard, and we're extending, should this have gone in front of the Plan Commission first?
No, because Section 128H...
Uh-huh.
21-120H says that the town council can extend that time.
Okay, doesn't need...
No.
Okay, just as an FYI, okay.
Yeah.
And then, secondly, Richard, what does this new deadline do to the bond issue that we authorized for Mr. Weiss?
Yeah, we talked to your bond counsel about it, and he wasn't concerned with it.
Okay.
I'm blanking out as to his name.
Mr. Pittman.
Pittman, Tom Pittman.
Bob and Tom.
Bob and Tom.
Do you have a motion, Mr. Pettit?
I will approve ordinance 23-29.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Minchuck, for approval of ordinance 23-29 on first reading. Any other questions or comments from the Council?
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Unless I'm missing something here, you said it was 23-29?
Yes, sir. I believe so.
I'm still trying to see where it said on my...
At the very top of this page, Leonard?
Yeah, you've got the other agenda.
I see it.
Do you have the ordinance in your packet there?
Well, I had this here, but it didn't show on my ordinance, and this is the amended ordinance, so I didn't see it on there.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
One final one, Mr. President. Richard, is there any time requirement on this, or can this wait for final approval until the 12th?
It can. Oh, you mean, I think it's only a one reading, isn't it? Because it's...
No, it's two.
In fact, zoning, it's two reading ordinance.
It's two readings, but you don't have any great time pressure on this.
No. Okay.
So we'll take it on first reading now, then.
Okay.
Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Neal?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you very much.
Yes, as the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Moving on this evening to second reading ordinances, we have ordinance 23-20, it's ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing additional appropriations in the 2023 budget. This is the companion ordinance here for the $40,000 for the CCD fund.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Minchuck, for approval of ordinance 23-20 on second and final reading. Questions or comments from the Council? Hearing none, I believe we've satisfied the public hearing on this, is that right, Mr. Svetnov?
Yes, we have.
Very good. Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Neal?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Six-zero, motion carries. Moving on tonight to second reading ordinance 23-25, this is the ordinance where we are reducing appropriations in the annual budget for several departments in the general fund because monies were not being needed this year as planned. The total amount is $100,000.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mrs. Usalak, for approval of ordinance 23-25 on second and final reading. And Michael, this enactment number, is that a carryover from the town of Highland? I kind of thought so. Any questions or comments on this ordinance? Hearing none, opening up for public comment. Is there any public comment on this $100,000 reduction in funds?
Yes.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Neal?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Six yeses, that motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 23-26, as amended, it's the ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, amending ordinances 23-18.23, I'm sorry, 23-16, 23-01, and 22-9A, and the pay for employees of the town of Maryville for the calendar year 2024. Motion by Mr. Pettit?
Second.
Second by Mr. Minchuck, for approval of ordinance 23-26 on second and final reading. Questions or comments from the Council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Neal?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Six yeses, that motion carries. Thank you. Do we do public comment on this? We didn't, did we?
No.
I don't think so. Is there any public comment on this ordinance, 23-26, salary ordinance for 2024 for the town of Maryville employees? Records show there's no public comment. Moving on to ordinance 23-27, I will turn it over to Mr. Lake for a synopsis of this ordinance.
Yeah, this is our stormwater management ordinance. It's regulatory and technical in nature, so essentially IDM had changed, instead of Rule 5, now there are the IDM stormwater construction permits that we had to... Actually, all MS4s, all over 150 of them throughout the state, had to amend their[1611.87]